Board of adjustments. Any written comments sent to the staff or forwarded to the board directly? Right now, we'd like to introduce our staff members. Chad Hobbs, Senior Associate City Attorney. Hudson Cheshire, Associate City Attorney. Zach Pons, Director of Planning. Jonathan Bowen, Zoning Administrator. Ms. Angie Terrell, Administrative Assistant. And we don't have, we don't have Scott on the back on here for recording. They left him off. Raise your hand anyway in the back so that.
Kevin Jones, we'll add him back in.
You've got to add Kevin.
He's a very important part of it.
Exactly, Kevin. I ask that the board members introduce themselves and state their occupation, starting on my left.
Mary Catherine Holt.
Tim Gillum.
Michelle Coley.
Paul Rollins Jr.
Oscar Larrigan.
Okay. Now, the purpose of the zoning Board of Adjustments, by virtue of state law and city ordinances, the purpose of the zoning Board of Adjustments is as follows. Here's appeals from zoning officer decisions. Grants special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the terms as established by the city council. Grants variance from the zoning code with strict enforcement creates unnecessary hardship. Circumstances that are not hardships include those that are. Number one, self-inflicted or self-created. And number two, inconvenient, and/or number three, personal. Now HOA and subdivision covenants. The zoning Board of Adjustments does not interpret or enforce subdivision covenants or HOA rules. Those matters are not relevant areas of inquiry by the board on any petition. Now petition signup. Now there were signup sheets located outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition and four speakers are allowed to speak in opposition to a petition. All speakers will have a maximum of five minutes unless the board votes to allow a longer time. Now the procedure. The board will take up items in the order of our final agenda. The board will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Now after the staff's presentation, I will call upon the petitioner to present their case. Now the petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the board votes to allow a longer time. Now at the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, I will call on any party in order of the signup who desires to support the petition. Thereafter, I will call on any party in order to sign up, in order of the signup, those who oppose the petition. Now when it's your turn for comment, please address, introduce yourself stating your name and address to the board. To provide your remarks, any written comments have been included into the record. Now after receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. Now any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the board votes to allow a longer time. Now the petitioner presents any new information. If the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, the board will allow those who oppose the petition the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Now any response will be limited to two minutes unless the board votes to allow a longer time. Now during the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the board for clarification or additional information. Now such interruptions will not reduce your allowed time limit. Once the board members are satisfied that they have received all relevant information, I will close further discussion by the public at which time the board members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. Now, video recording. These procedures are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Any party aggrieved by any final judgment or decision of such zoning Board of Adjustments may within 15 days thereafter appeal therewith to the circuit court by filing with such board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision from which the appeal is taken. Now do any members of the board have any conflicts of interest as any agenda matters? If so, please state the same for the record.
No.
No.
No? Okay. I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to all the matters before the board tonight.
Yes, it has.
Okay. Does the Office of City Attorney have any updates on pending cases to present to us this evening?
No ma'am, we don't.
Okay. We'll move to staff presentation of petitions.
Board members, it looks like the petitioner for ZBA 0825 is not present, but should be coming later in the meeting. If okay with the board would take a vote to move this to the end of the agenda, ZBA 0825.
So you want to move it to the end?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion and vote?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to move it to the end?
Alright, we'll start with ZBA 0925, Partners in Recovery, petitions for a variance from the use-specific regulations. This is to operate a group home on the property at 634th Avenue, zone to MR1, Council District 1. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as an aerial view and then a close-up image of the house and the parking area. So the request is for a variance from the use-specific standards to operate a group home. The property will serve as a sober living facility, housing individual engaged in recovery programs. The residents will be monitored by full-time Phoenix House staff members. Per the petitioner, if the request is denied, they would be unable to offer a house to those striving to achieve and maintain recovery. They state that no additional parking will be required and the property will be inspected weekly for maintenance, pest control, and exterior appearance. So again, the request is for a variance from the use-specific regulations. Here before you on the screen is our specific regulations for group homes. That first bullet point, at least 1,000 feet shall be from one group home to another and they do not meet that regulation. We did receive three comments in opposition and a petition with 29 signatures in opposition. I believe we have the representative here in person. Do you have any questions for staff?
What's the closest one?
Looking at the property records, it looks like about 360 feet away. There are multiple in the area and I will let the petitioner confirm exactly how many are in the general area.
Okay, Representative for Partners in Recovery?
Hey, good afternoon. I'm John Tyler, the Executive Director at Phoenix House. My home address is 4909 Madison Circle, Northport.
They said they can't hear. Is that microphone on?
Ma'am?
Is your microphone on right there?
Let's see. I'm sorry, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
My name's John Tyler, the Executive Director at Phoenix House. My address is 4909 Madison Circle, Northport, Alabama.
Okay. So tell us about your plan and what's the plan?
So our plan is to purchase a three-bedroom home, two blocks away from the Phoenix House. The 300 feet, we have some property, some other sober living homes located one block behind. I've never actually measured it. I think this went into effect in January, I believe. So we've never actually measured the exact variance required, but it's probably about, yeah, about 300, 400 feet. And we're looking to purchase a three-bedroom, two-bath home for three residents, one per room, monitored full-time by Phoenix House Partners in Recovery staff.
And so what is the hardship? So when we're talking about a variance, we're looking for your hardship. And so what is the hardship?
The hardship for our residents is, is a lot of them are engaged, so they're re-inoculating to the community at large and they're working on stable, full-time employment, which is a requirement to get into one of our Partners in Recovery houses to have stable, full-time employment. They're working on more, a lot of times they're working on more substantial employment. So they might, they might be engaged in employment that's on the lower end of a pay rate. And so we like to, we want to provide the ability to reintegrate into the community and an affordable dwelling so that they could eventually move on to independent housing.
So, and that's admirable and I really like what Phoenix House does in getting people back into the community and so I am appreciative of what your efforts and what you do. But when we're talking about hardship, we're talking about hardship of Partners in Recovery in terms of putting, it has to be this house and that we have to give you a variance because of this house. Something about it that makes it where you can't do anything else other than it be right here. You can't use it for anything else, you can't do anything else there.
Well, the statement I'd make on that is, is we've been, we've been engaged in trying to increase our sober, our sober living houses to better serve our, to better serve our population, to better serve our residents. And this particular, this particular property, we've engaged, you know, for the hardship for, about using the property. I'm really not sure unless you had, unless you had, how to answer that right now about the hardship. Yeah, please.
My name is Wynne Fortenberry. I live at 8 Country Club Circle in Tuscaloosa. I'm the listing agent of the property. So I've been assisting Partners in Recovery, trying to acquire it. One thing that Bob behind me might be able to answer towards that hardship is that it's hard for them to find a property near their facility. They like to have these sober living houses near the facility and to find one that's in turnkey, ready for occupants to move in without having to do a lot of renovations. And they just don't find a lot of those that are within close proximity to the Phoenix House.
And I do understand that, but still again, it can't be financial and it can't be, you know, that you prefer to have a house that's turnkey-ready. That's not a hardship. That's a, you understand, like, that's kind of, that's what we like to have. So that's what we're trying to find is what your variance is and we weren't able to see it from why we should go against a new ordinance that's been put in place.
I'm Bob Weatherly. I'm the Board President of Phoenix House and Partners in Recovery. And when you speak of hardship, our clients are coming out of a 90-day program within the Phoenix House and then if they're model clients, they have the opportunity to move to our sober living houses. Their hardships are, I'm going to say, 80 to 90% of them are coming from the courts or the prisons or jails. They have, 80% of them are under the poverty line. To actually find housing in Tuscaloosa County is very difficult for our clients. We want to be able to monitor our clients, to have them in safe, wholesome atmosphere, so to speak, and close to our main building, frankly. And when, I apologize for being late. When we have a four-bedroom house or a three-bedroom house, this house is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house, there will be three clients in there, not four, not five. We don't do that. We do not overcrowd our properties. It doesn't help their recovery, one. And two, it's just hard on these houses. And once again, I was late, but if you look at this property that we're looking at, across the street from the property is a abandoned building. To the left of the property is an unoccupied house. Across the street from it is an unoccupied house. And to the right of the one across the street is in pretty sketchy shape. The one to the right of that is currently being remodeled. And so I promise you, when we come into a housing situation, we're going to make it better there, not worse. Frankly, I don't understand why the neighbors are concerned about us. One iota simply because, one, we are not trying to buy up the neighborhood. We have bought one house and remodeled one house in the last 20 years? 20 years. And so we're not trying to push anybody out of the neighborhood. And I'm sorry, but it's been very frustrating because we really believe in long-term sobriety treatment and it's so hard to get our clients into, their credit scores are a negative number, okay? It is hard for them, well, I'm just rambling, but please tell us what we need to do or is there any, what would you do if you were us?
I do have a question. You're asking about a hardship and before the new guidelines came in with framework a few months ago, wouldn't this organization still have to ask for a hardship to get an exception? So what's different other than the proximity between now and just a few months ago? They would need an exception either way, correct?
Not before, you wouldn't have had.
Right, so prior to January, you know, our old zoning code, we did not classify, we didn't have group home as a specific use type. And so when you, you know, when this type of use came in and had more than four, or more than three unrelated, they went through ZBA for approval of that. If they were under three, you know, we had no real, real, like, we didn't have any restrictions essentially. But now we've identified every residential district, a group home has to go through the special exception process, which is that second part of this request. However, for this specific request, you are within 1,000 feet of a similar establishment and so you're going to, so you're requesting the variance from that number A, or that letter A, right up there.
And I believe I understand. The hard, for us, it would be hard to manage if it was, if it was away from our facility, with our current infrastructure, our camera system, our staff, our night, our night, our night staff. It would be, it would be more difficult for us to manage the property if it was farther, if it was farther away. I believe I understand what you're asking.
Are there any questions for Partners in Recovery?
How long has the, has the main Phoenix House been operating its current location, the large facility?
Since '92.
And I, I didn't get your name, but I'm sorry. Did you say you all only have two houses?
No, sir. We, about 18 to 20 years ago, there was five houses created. And the current, the current administration over the last several years has acquired two, has acquired one, one house. We re, we re-did a house through help from Habitat for Humanity, one we already owned and we're looking to close on this current property. So it would be two in the last. Those ones that got created before that was from another, was from another administration.
So you have a total of six then?
We have a total of seven right now.
Seven?
Mm-hmm.
All seven in this same area?
Six, six are, six are on the same block and one is two blocks, is about three blocks away, going towards Stillman College, on 35th Avenue.
Do you all operate any other Phoenix houses as residential houses or sober living facilities anywhere else outside of this particular area?
No, sir.
Any additional questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
So we don't have anyone signed up to speak for or against. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak?
I didn't sign up, I got here a few minutes late. But my name is Wynne Fortenberry. I live at 8 Country Club Circle. I am the listing agent on the property, but I also live in the neighborhood. I live within 450 feet of one of their sober living properties and I have for 16 years. I know group homes, or in this particular case, a sober living house, which is a kind of group home, as I understand it from, from the new classification with the city, can have a stigma attached to them. And some people do not want them in their neighborhood. Some do not want any in their neighborhood. Some folks don't like an Airbnb in their neighborhood. Some people don't want rental houses near where they live. But all of these examples, there's needs for them. You know, if any of these kinds of properties presents problems or annoyances for the residents, I think they're justified to complain and wish them to be elsewhere. You know, in this neighborhood, there are plenty of houses that do present problems and annoyances for a lot of the, a lot of the residents. You know, I was talking to another landlord who owns several properties in the neighborhood and he, I think, submitted a comment that was fairly neutral that, but he said that, in his comment, that he's never had any problems in 20 years with any of the Partners in Recovery houses. They take care of their properties, they cut the grass, they've been good neighbors. They do have a low occupancy rate. There's houses in the neighborhood that have 10, 11 people in them that have lots of problems with the police, but as far as I know, they have a very, very clean record and no problems with, with law enforcement. When they manage a property, like if they were to acquire a new one, you know exactly what you're going to get with them. You don't necessarily know that with other kinds of landlords. And, you know, as I said, that this is the only, the second one that they've acquired in 20 years and I think if they get it, they'll be good stewards of the property if you approve their exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak for it? Okay, anybody else like to speak for it?
Can I see a, can I see a map of what this looks like? Because depending on what it looks like, I might speak for or against it. I want to know, oh, I'm sorry, my name's Jared Corbin.
Could you say your name and address, please?
My name's Jared Corbin. I live at 4709 Spieswood Street. I want to see a map of this, like, is this?
A property map or a site map is what you want to see?
No. It says they can't have it within 1,000 of another and so is there a map that shows what their restriction is? Is that like, Phoenix House has a lot of houses.
So I'm going to, I mean, I don't know if you, if this is a for or against. I don't know if you want this public comment to be on.
I just came for another meeting and if I saw a map and it, and it was completely, 1,000 feet, that's 2,000 feet in any direction. If I saw a map that said, okay, they really can't put it many places in Tuscaloosa, then.
Well, it's 1,000 feet within another group home. So it's not just 1,000 feet, it's 1,000 feet in the, in direction of another group home, in relation to another group home. And so that was the purpose of framework to put that. Neighborhoods don't want to be taken over by group homes. And so being able to put group homes next to each other, back-to-back, then you would kind of change the character of a neighborhood. So they're requesting that there be 1,000 feet between group homes and so this is within 430 feet of another group home.
Yes, I appreciate, I appreciate that, but I think my, what I'm trying to say is, how many, how many houses does Phoenix House have?
Okay, so you're, you need to address your comments to us.
Okay, sorry.
So they said they have seven group homes right now.
They have seven.
In this area.
If I were to see where a map and I was like, realistically, they have nowhere that you could have, you said finance can't be a part of this.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's not a hardship being able, because they can't find a place to put it. There is a whole Tuscaloosa that, you know.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for trying to help. So speaking against, come up.
Good afternoon. My name is Invera Woodson Tabore. I emailed in comments and photos. My house is directly adjacent to 634th Avenue and that house has never been completely maintained, whether it was occupied and I was never clear whether they were actual owners or renters. But the case remains, there is a unified fence. They have a shed there. It has grown up, the weeds have now become trees. It has damaged their shed. If they're purchasing that property and one of the purchasers is someone who is also the Realtor, when are you going to fix that? Because that means no one else would have the opportunity or the desire to purchase. So if we're talking about upkeep and maintenance and what it looks like in the neighborhood, that's already a no-go. Secondly, this is a picture of the house in the packet that's online. This is not the graphics that, that matches. Because the house, as you can see, goes straight across 34th and 6th. If you take 6th Street from the front of my house, you can walk straight down to the Department of Motor Vehicles. You cannot do that with what's in this map. So this is erroneous. I don't know who did this for them, but they messed them up because this, this is not good faith. So, secondly.
So you're saying this map that we're looking at that's up here now?
That's accurate, ma'am. I actually emailed a picture of that.
Board, just to clarify, that we did receive notice that the wrong maps were posted and that was corrected on the website, so the packets now reflect the appropriate maps for this case.
Thank you. It remains. The rear of the house has a shed at the back of the carport. It's not well-maintained. Secondly, 6th Street, which is, again, directly adjacent, is full of kids. If you go by there right now, they're probably out of school and this has been their last two weeks of nothing but basketball. They don't care. They're out there, they're doing their thing. And that's wonderful. All for it, not a problem with the kids. But if we already have Phoenix House itself and multiple individual group homes, we are now changing the dynamic. And as the individual who is greatest affected, I'm a little concerned about where my property value is going because it's already hard enough to maintain our own homes. Now we're looking at something that may or may not go forward or back.
And where is your house in relation to the red box?
To the left of it, ma'am, on 6th Street. It is the house immediately adjacent to it. We ship, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they said, they just said that the house next to it was abandoned and the house across the street was abandoned. Is that true and that?
No, ma'am. My house has not been abandoned. I was on military leave and while I was gone, I had major renovations done to the exterior. And he can't say that it's been abandoned since June of 2023 because I've been home since then. And it stands, the comment was made, that the homes are in good repair. It's not. You can probably reach across the fence and pull a big plank off because there's already a hole. So you're, you're not maintaining, it's never been well-maintained in that area. I've been there since 2010 and I would say after 2005, wherever that shifted, that first set of owners when I moved in, it, it's just, I go out there, I take it off the fence line. When I was away, I hired someone to take it off the fence line. So I have great concerns with how their maintenance and the circumstances of the individuals, since we now have multiple in the area, will affect my home and the homes of my neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against? Okay. At this time, we'll close public comment and we will start with board comment from my left. Oh, I do apologize. Partners in Recovery, would you like to speak to anything that was said, a rebuttal?
Yes, I'm Bob Weatherly, the Board President. Okay, where the house in, where the red stripe box is, right across the street, yes, is an abandoned property.
You should be able to see it right down there. Is there?
Oh, okay. This is in fact, did you just touch it?
No, it looks like it.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. I was not referring to your home.
He's talking about it, at that intersection of 6th Street and 34th Avenue. All four houses on each corner are currently vacant.
Okay.
And I, and I really, I apologize, I did not, she has a lovely home right behind us.
That is well-maintained and, you know, my comments was that the Partners in Recovery have done an excellent job maintaining the properties that they currently own. They do not currently own this property. I understand her concerns that the current owner may not take as good a care as she would like, but I think if you look at, you know, and even if she went and looked at the properties that they actually own, they do an excellent job of maintaining the physical integrity of the structures as well as the grass.
We would love to show anybody in the neighborhood our properties. If you would give us a few hours where we could notify our clients, y'all are welcome to come in. The neighbors are welcome to come in. We could make that available for y'all.
All right, thank you. All right, now we'll close public comment and go to board comment, starting from my left.
I want you to know this. I have so much appreciation for the Partners in Recovery and your mission, but I do think it's important that we abide by the regulations that the city has established as much as possible. And in this instance, I do not see the hardship in granting the variance.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow board members. I mean, the city spent a lot of time putting our new code together and we need to. I mean, the city spent a lot of time putting our new code together and, and we need to do what we can to follow our code. I understand that certain instances, we, you know, when it's not a financial, we can grant this variance. But on this particular situation, I believe we gotta follow our code and follow the, the guidelines in place. So I'm gonna be a no.
And I agree with my fellow board members. And I do have a lot of respect for what the Phoenix House does. And I just feel having seven homes in such an area, that is why the code is enforced, is to kinda maintain the character of neighborhoods. And that if we allow this to go on, you can just continue to continue. And eventually, like you said, there are four houses that are vacant. Then basically, you could just buy all four of those houses and put group homes in them. And then I don't think that's what we want to happen in our neighborhoods. And with twenty-nine people signing a petition against it and speaking out, and the ordinance is already saying that this is not what we want in our city. You know, the city is saying that that's not what we want in our neighborhoods so closely like that. I'm gonna have to not be in the favor of this.
I agree with my other board members. I'm not in favor of granting this petition. I don't see a hardship. Outside the hardship, I remember the last house that we voted on, which would have been, which would have been the seventh house for Partners in Recovery. I stated my concern then with having so many houses in this one particular area. There are no other Phoenix Homes in, in the other area, other than this particular neighborhood. You have five houses on one street. I personally just don't feel as though that's something that's beneficial to that neighborhood. Yes, having recovery homes, we need that. But to flood one particular area with that, I'm not comfortable with it. And I don't see myself being comfortable with it moving forward. Let's spread it out. If we're talking about individuals that are in a certain situation where they may have not the best resources, let's look at possibly putting them in an area with better resources. But with that being said, I'm not in favor.
Um, I'm in favor of this group home.
So at this time, we'll close board comments. I'll read the motion. The motion. Okay. The motion is ZBA dash zero-nine dash twenty-five, Partners in Recovery petitions for a variance from the use specific regulations to operate a group home on the property located at six hundred thirty-fourth Avenue, Zone MR dash one, Council District One, voting with Mary Catherine.
No.
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 Yes.
Motion fails.
Board members, for ZBA ten twenty-five, it, it is essentially tied to ZBA zero-nine twenty-five. So we still will need either a motion from the applicant to withdraw this request or a vote by the board members.
So do we need to make a motion to withdraw it?
Yeah, y'all need to vote on it, so.
Okay, so I need a motion to withdraw ZBA?
So unless the petitioners would like to make a request to withdraw, then we would need a vote.
Oh, we just need to vote on it, okay. I'll read it. All right, ZBA dash ten dash twenty-five, Partners in Recovery petitions for a special exception to operate a group home on the property located at six hundred thirty-fourth Avenue, Zone MR dash one, Council District One, voting with Mary Catherine.
No.
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 Motion fail.
Moving on to ZBA eleven twenty-five, Carl Soddergrin petitions for a variance from the residential setback and ground coverage regul- regulations. This is on the property at twelve twenty-fourteenth Street, Zone SFR three, Council District four. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as an aerial view. It's just a vacant lot today, so we've got a couple images that capture that lot. The request is for a variance from the residential setback and ground coverage ratio regulations to build a single-family structure. The lot is approximately twenty-four hundred square feet. The petitioner proposes to build a nine hundred and sixty-square-foot, uh, single-family structure. The park in will be tucked inside the house in the garage. The ground coverage ratio is thirty-eight percent, which is three percent more than the requirement for this zoning district. And the petitioner states that strict adherence to the setback and ground coverage ratio requirements would render this lot unbuildable. The petitioner stated that the house will be in line with other properties in the university area and the adjacent neighborhood. So here we have those use regulations for single-family residential three zoning district. You can see the side setback, rear setback, and ground coverage ratio are the items that we are looking at here. There's, this is where we have the proposed site plan. So you can see that on each side, posing four-foot setback to the side and to the rear. And then a ten-foot setback over here on the other side. We did receive two comments. One comment was in support of the request. Another comment had some questions about the setbacks. We do have the petitioner here in person. Do you have any questions for staff?
So basically, this lot, nothing under new framework would allow any of this. It still falls under the small lot size and-
It, that's correct. The, the setbacks, there could not be anything built on this lot currently.
With these setbacks?
That's correct.
What about the opposing property that are next door to it? Do they have issues with the same type setbacks?
The, there was one comment submitted about the four-foot setback. I believe the petitioner has a, has a reasoning as to why he's proposing four-foot instead of five feet. The other property owner, which is in this area, had no issues with the setbacks.
Are all the lights, light sizes around here the same?
They're a little bit different. I'm gonna go back to the aerial. So this one, you can see that it, at one point was probably, actually, let me go back. It was probably connected to this house here. And then at some point, they split it. This, this house next door, this board approved a variance for, from a, to have a four-foot setback probably a year and a half ago because of the lot width was too narrow. These three properties would all fall in line with not meeting our regulation today. But they vary in size, but many of them do not meet SFR three standards.
Is that that old nineteen seventy-two ordinance that is-
Night, and, and now with our twenty-twenty-five, it, no matter which ordinance you chose, it, it wouldn't be able to, to fit into it.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I have a question. So where the cars are in front of this, to the south of the red box? So that's considered another adjacent property?
This right here?
Yes, sir.
So that is actually city right-of-way. And I'm gonna draw, the right-of-way is pretty large in this area. It's essentially right just north of the setback, or setbacks, of the sidewalks that runs just above that line. So this whole area running down Fourteenth Street is a public right-of-way.
That's a lot of public right-of-way.
And, and the setback that we are considering, is there one that's facing the public right-of-way?
The, so the zoning ordinance actually allows, and I'll go back to this, the, the front setback, we have new footnotes in our updated ordinance. So the footnote here allows us as staff to adjust the front setback to align with houses on either side. So if I go back to the aerial view, the front setback is actually pushed back a little bit further than this house here. So with its adjacent neighbors, they've actually set it back more off of the road. The setbacks that did not meet our regulation are the ones located on the side and to the rear.
Okay, so the side and the rear setbacks are the ones that are in question?
That's correct.
And the alley is not in use?
It's not, I believe the, the property owners to the north, and I will let the petitioner talk about that. I believe that alley, the reason that, that is a public right-of-way or a public alley, so it is used by other property owners besides this property. And actually, just to make one correction, so the ten-foot setback, we go back to our, so our side setbacks here are five feet minimum on one side or fourteen feet combined. So they're meeting the fourteen feet combined by having that ten-foot setback. It's just we require a five-foot minimum. So that's why he's requesting for a variance to have four feet, still getting fourteen feet total.
Sounds like we're splitting hairs here. All right, thank you. All right, so we're looking for Carl Soddergrin petitions.
Good evening, Carl Soddergrin, twelve eighteen Fourteenth Street. And pretty well covered everything, so I'm welcome to answer any questions. And I didn't quite hear all the questions that you asked, so if you, if they remain unanswered, I might need you to repeat them.
The city staff did make a mention there was a reason why the back setback can't be five feet. Why you have it as four?
Well, margin of error really is the main reason. If you note how the actual proposed building sits inside that four-foot setback, while it's not, there's not a measurement provided there, that's about one foot off of the proposed set, four-foot setback. So that would be five foot. Again, that's more margin of error than anything. We can make sure we have it right. On the other side, it is set in about six inches. That still gives us the ten foot we need to the east side. But the west side is at four foot, approximately four foot, six inches.
So when you say margin of error, you mean when you build this, it will have the five-foot setback?
It'd be five foot. If, if four foot is passed, our intention is to build that northern wall line at five foot. And again, same with the other at four and a half.
And when you're less than five for building code, it'll have to be fire-rated on that, on that side that's less than five feet away from the property line.
Say again, I'm, I didn't-
So the reason that our standards are five feet pretty much throughout the ordinance, that's about the smallest you can get, is because building code requires five foot, with that five-foot separation, if you get any less than that, you have to fire-rate it adjacent to that property line or whatever. So like in this case, that would have to be fire-rated if it's less than five feet. And so this is just a building code thing that it'll have to abide by. But other than that, there's nothing, nothing else to add to that.
And if I may add to that, uh, fire code, masonry construction, and that's what we propose.
What, what type of building is it? Is it a residential building?
Residential.
Residential?
Yes.
What, what, uh, how many bedrooms, bathroom?
Four bedrooms, four bathrooms.
Is it gonna be a duplex or something?
No.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone signed up to speak for or against. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition? At this time, we'll close board comment, I mean, public comment and move to board comment.
Uh, with the confirmation that the setback at the rear is going to be five feet, I really don't have any issues with this, given the property size is small and nine hundred and sixty square feet is not a, a huge house that they're trying to put on this lot. So I have no issues with this.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I don't see an issue either. It's already a small lot and they already have issues with a non-conforming lot. Neighbors also, you know, follow the same suit, so therefore I don't see an issue.
Yeah, I don't see any issue as well. There's nothing to cover it and there's no way to put anything else. If you don't have something, it'll just be a vacant lot. So we'd rather see something there. So I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a, an issue with it. I just have, as mentioned before, nine hundred square feet, that is a small house. And then to put four bedrooms and four bathrooms within that nine hundred square feet, it could possibly be one of those situations where maybe we ask that you, you know, reduce the size to make it a three-bedroom or four-bedroom, three-bath or something to sort of fit within that. But I really don't have any issues. Question for city. Is it three unrelated individuals?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so we would, when they submit for building permits, we'll look and make sure it's not student-oriented in nature in the design of, of the interior.
Well, just as long as that's noted, where we make sure that it's sticks to the guidelines and regulations with the three unrelated individuals and sticks to the fire code, I have no issues. I'm in favor. And I see the hardship.
I had no issues at the time.
So I have a question to, we don't have to stipu-, do we stipulate that? We don't have to stipulate any of that. We just, we're just approving the variance for the setbacks. So nothing, okay, all right. So at this time, we'll close board comments. I'll read the motion. ZBA dash eleven dash twenty-five, Carl Soddergrin petitions for a variance from the residential setback and ground coverage regulations on the property located at twelve twenty-fourteenth Street, Zone SFR dash three, Council District four, voting, Mary Catherine?
Yes.
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 Petition is approved.
Next case is ZBA twelve twenty-five, Herndon Hicks and Associates petitions for a variance from the minimum lot area and minimum lot width regulations to subdivide a lot located at four oh one Forty-second Street, Zone SFR two, Council District seven. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view. Currently, it's just a vacant lot. So we have a couple of images just showing the lot that exists today. The petitioner is requesting a variance from the minimum lot width and lot size requirements. This is to create two non-conforming lots. The petitioner states that by subdividing the property, it will become ideal for small affordable housing. And according to the petitioner, there are several other lots in the neighborhood that do not meet the required lot size or lot width requirements. So here's where we're looking at section twenty-five sixty-three for single-family residential two. You can see lot area and lot width, nine, nine thousand square feet, seventy-five feet wide. Looking at the site plan, neither of the proposed lots would meet that. So essentially, the request is taking one conforming lot, creating two non-conforming lots. We did not receive any public comment for this request. We do have the representative here in person. Do you have any questions for staff?
So you, you did say the lot is conforming today?
Like, the lot conforms today. The proposed plan inform, in front of you would create two non-conforming lots.
Okay, so. Okay. And any comments? All right, Mr. Herndon Hicks and Associates?
Mike Hicks, Herndon Hicks Associates, twenty-seven twenty-eight Lurleen Wallace Boulevard. The owner was gonna be here tonight, he got detained. He's taking this, this is a fifteen thousand square foot lot. He's gonna make two small lots and put small affordable housing on it, similar to what's surrounding the property now. There's some, there's some really small lots in this neighborhood. I mean, the, in fact, the lots in this neighborhood run the gamut from acreage to, there are a couple, there are four lots to the southwest that are only forty-five feet wide. And the hardships actually that the lot's too big to have a small, you know, particularly, some people, particularly the elderly, they don't wanna maintain a fifteen thousand square foot lot. And Tuscaloosa needs some more affordable housing, and that's what he's proposing.
But he's still not saying what the hardship is, because that just sounds personal, that you don't wanna personally maintain a fifteen thousand square foot lot. So what would be the hardship? Because he can use it the way it is, so.
Well, he's afraid that he won't be able to move it, you know, that it, it, he won't be able to use it to the capacity that, he thinks this is a lot better use of the property.
Any other questions?
Do you have a site plan of the other lots around? Or do you know what the other lots around, surrounding this particular?
There, on the screen here, you can see the black lines are the, the lot size, or the lots. We don't really have specific measurements, but in comparison to this one, if you were to kinda cut that in half.
Yeah, this whole, this old subdivision, you know, it was split up haphazardly over the years for, it's a pretty old subdivision.
I mean, looking at this, you know, without a scale, it looks like most of the lots are larger sized lots for, for the most part of the neighborhood.
Well, if you look to the, the one adjacent to the west is only fifty-five feet wide and the two, there are the four to the southwest that are forty-five feet wide. And in this whole neighborhood from Skylines to Greensboro, I counted over thirty that were non-conforming.
But it's conforming right now, so you're asking us to make it non-conforming so that he can put more houses on the property, and so, okay. Is that what you're requesting?
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, we don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against. Is anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition? Okay, at this time, we'll close board comment, I don't know, keep mixing that up, close, public comment and start board comment.
I understand that there is kind of a variety of lot sizes in this area, but I just don't think it's good practice to take a conforming lot and make it non-conforming. And so for that reason, I'm not in favor of this variance.
Yeah, I would agree as well, we have a lot that is, is conforming and having a hard time to find the hardship of taking this lot to divide it, to make it non-conforming, just to add two, two, two structures, so I'm also not in a favor.
Yeah, when, when we're pressed to find the hardship and we can't, you know, find it and it's not being presented to us, then I, I don't see taking a property, splitting it and, and making it not fit, so I'm not in favor.
I agree with my other board members, I don't see the hardship, I'm not in favor.
I agree with my board members also, I don't see the hardship.
Alright, we'll close board comment, I'll read the petition. ZBA dash twelve dash twenty-five, Herndon Hicks and Associates Incorporated, petitions for a variance for, from the minimum lot area and minimum lot width regulations to subdivide a lot located at four oh one Forty-second Street, Zone SFR dash two, Council District seven. Voting, Ms. Mary Catherine?
No.
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 Petition fails.
Next case is ZBA thirteen twenty-five, Bobby Herndon, petitions for a variance from the minimum lot area regulations to reconfigure two non-conforming lots on the property at fifty-six Cherokee Hills, Zone SFRE, Council District six. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as the aerial view. And then this is an image of fifty-six and fifty-four Cherokee Hills. It'll make a little bit more sense when we look at the site plan, but the petitioner is requesting a variance from the residential regulations from the single-family residential estate lots, which is not something we see quite often, but we will explain that more in detail, there are currently two, two non-conforming lots and the petitioner would like to move one of the property lines further away from one of the residents. So they're currently two lots, they're currently non-conforming, and they will remain two lots. So this is our SFRE, we really only have a few neighborhoods that get this zoning district, but the lot area requirements for these lots are two acres. So looking at the site plan, neither of these are currently two acres. You can see the current lot line located here. Essentially, their request is to move the lot line further away from fifty-six. So they're currently non-conforming, they will, they will remain non-conforming, just moving that lot line to give a little bit more distance between the property line and the house at fifty-six Cherokee Hills. We did not receive any public comment for this request, and we have the representative here in person, you have any questions for staff?
So it's gonna move to the solid line?
Yes, it's moving from here to here.
Okay.
And it'll run that way.
So the, the two lots are, as they stand right now, non-conforming?
That's correct, the, the two lots currently are, are non-conforming, moving this, it doesn't make them any more non-conforming.
So are there any issues as it currently stands with the setback?
No, there are not, so they have the, the dash line, I know there's a lot of lines in the site plan, but the dash lines on either side of the property line that runs right down the middle, those are actually their setbacks, so from a setback perspective, they are, they are still in compliance.
So even with the current lot line, there's no setback with number fifty-six?
The current lot, that, that's correct, so we don't know the distance between the house and the current lot line, but by moving this lot line closer towards fifty-four, it does give a little bit more room, that's right.
Alright, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bobby Herndon? A different hat, huh?
This is Mike Hicks with Herndon Hicks Associates, Bobby's out of town, so, but as stated, he just wants to move that line away from his house. I don't, I don't think it actually encroaches onto the minimum buil, uh, building line, but he did just want a little more room around the house.
Any questions?
I, I have a question, since these are already two nor, non-conforming lots, do we have to have a hardship to do this, or how does that work?
I mean, yeah, it's good to take into consideration hardship, but
Okay.
with them both being non-conforming, it's very clear that this is different than the previous request.
Yeah, okay. Just, I don't know how that. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against, is there anyone in, in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this property? Or this petition? Okay, at this time, we're gonna close public comment and go to board comment.
Um, I, I don't have a problem with this, to me, it almost cleans it up a little bit. I, I don't know that there's a hardship that's been established, but I, I don't have an issue with the variance.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with this one, it's, it's different than the ones before, I mean, the, there, there, it's already non-conforming lots, they're just taking them and, and, you know, as she said, cleaning up the lot lines and obviously neither neighbor cares or they would be in opposition, so I don't, I don't really see an issue here.
And the only hardship I see is that if the petitioner wanted to do anything on their property and expand on that side, they wouldn't be able to because it, the setback and how close it is to the current lot line. So I think that is what they're kinda maybe planning to do something a little later on. So, but I don't see any problem with this cleaning it up.
Yeah, I agree with my other board members, I, I don't see an issue with it. I'm, I'm actually in favor of it, but again, it's difficult to find what that hardship is. So that's why I was asking about where the current lot line sits and is that infringing on the setback as it currently stands? So that could be used as a hardship to move to clear it up, but we don't have the, the actual numbers. I'm in favor.
I agree with my colleagues, I'm in favor also.
We'll close board comments, I'll read the petition. ZBA dash thirteen dash twenty-five, Bobby Herndon, petitions for a variance from the minimum lot area regulations to reconfigure two non-conforming lots on the property located at fifty-six Cherokee Hills, Zone SFR dash E, Council District six, voting, Mary Catherine?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Petition approved.
Next case is ZBA fourteen twenty-five, Scott Russell, petitions for a variance from the residential setback regulations. This is on the property at twenty-five oh one Sixteenth Street East, Zone SFR two, Council District six. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view. And these are some images of the house, and this is an image of the back of the house, we might reference this image a little bit later on. So the petitioner is requesting a variance from the residential setback regulations. The house currently has a small attic space with an internal stairway. The petitioner plans to alter this space to meet building code requirements, including fire, safety, stairs and egress. The proposed addition will be located in the area currently occupied by a deck, and we have some drawings that show this. And the exterior of the addition will match the existing home in terms of materials. So we're looking at a single-family residential two. The site plan kinda makes it clear, so the setbacks are located along this dash line here. The highlighted portion in the site plan that says porch is actually where the deck is gonna be, or where the addition is gonna be located, so it's gonna be built right on top of an existing porch. This house is already non-conforming. Here we have just a couple of images to show what the new addition will look like on the house. So you've got your existing versus your proposed. And we have just a couple more elevations. And this is looking from the driveway, so this is what you would see from the driveway, looking towards that new addition, and then looking from the rear of the house. We did not receive any public comment for this request, and we do have the representative here in person, you have any questions for staff?
So we're basically building up?
It's buil, building up, it is, so it, it is kind of hard to, to see from this elevation, but on the site plan, the yellow section, there's currently a deck that exists there, and they're essentially just building on top of that. Building on top of that to bring it and tie it into the house itself.
So the porch is there today, that's what they're building on top of?
That's correct.
And they're, so they're keeping that same footprint that they have, or building print?
That is my understanding, and I'll, I'll, we'll let the applicant confirm that. But yes, not, not going anymore towards the, the north property line than what already exists with the porch. Yep.
Okay, Scott Russell?
Scott Russell, thirteen oh five Twin Oaks Road East.
So explain this to us.
Well, I thought that I had a floor plan included in the email that I sent, can I give you this, where it'll make, this, you can understand it? That yellow section of deck, we would take it out, pour footings and build a flight of stairs that goes up to the second floor of the house from the exterior, basically occupying the same footprint.
Yeah, so bottom line is your stairs in this floor plan is where the porch is today.
Right.
And you're just going up and then retrofitting the inside of the house.
Right, the previous homeowner made an attic dwelling space that doesn't make, when you walk up there, it moves 'cause they decked the ceiling joists, so it's not safe, there's no egress windows, there's no door. There's no smoke detectors up there, I mean, nothing's to code, the stairs going up to it are different rise and run heights, so it doesn't faultmate code that way either. So what we're gonna do is build a heated and cooled livable space up there that complies with current codes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so anyone who's signed up to speak for or against, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment and go to board comment.
Uh, so since the house is already non-conforming and the modifications aren't really going to expand the footprint of the house, I, I don't have any issues with this.
Yeah, I'm in agreement, so I have no issue, they're keeping the same footprint, so I'm in favor.
I agree with my fellow board members.
I agree, I have no issues.
I have no issues, I'm in favor of the petition.
Closing board comment, I'll read the petition. ZBA dash fourteen dash twenty-five, Scott Russell, petitions for a variance from the residential setback regulations on the property located at twenty-five oh one Sixteenth Street East, Zone SFR dash two, Council District six. Voting, Mary Catherine?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Petition approved.
Do you want your foot, footprint back?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we'll move on to our sole short-term rental for the night. ZBA fifteen twenty-five, Vanessa Lockhart, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a dwelling located at twenty-five sixteen Stanford Drive, Zone SFR two, Council District six. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view, and a view of all the short-term rentals in the area. Here's a picture of the house with that proposed parking. So this request is for, to allow the short-term rental of a dwelling. Vanessa Lockhart will be the primary contact and be available twenty-four hours a day. The petitioner has experience managing over sixty single-family homes and is owner of a property management company. This house is equipped with a security system, ring doorbell and motion sensor lights. It is not owner-occupied and the house will be rented out when it's not being rent, rented short-term. So the house has three bedrooms and two bathrooms, the petitioner requests eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff recommends six adults with three vehicles. Engineering has recommended that one car must be parked inside the garage. We did receive one comment in opposition to this request, do you have any questions for staff?
The map you showed had several other short-term rentals on it. Have we had any issues with any of those other short-term rentals that we know of?
To my knowledge, not in this area.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Vanessa Lockhart? As she's coming, did Rod Shirley come in? The first one, first petitioner?
We'll, we'll hear that request after this one.
He is here, though.
Thank you so, for presenting that case so eloquently.
Please speak into the microphone, the audience can't hear, okay? State your name and address.
Vanessa Lockhart.
And your address?
My address is twenty-one oh seven Forest Lake Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, three five four oh one.
And just tell us your plan for the short-term rental.
What's my plan?
Uh-huh.
Uh, I'm the property manager for this property and I have leased it out before. The owner of the property lives out of town, just requested that I petition for it because he had gotten several inquiries about renting it on a short-term basis.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Lockhart? Thank you so much. Okay, we don't have anyone signed up to speak for or against the petition, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition? Please come up, yes ma'am. No problem.
My name is Carol Woodman, I live at twenty-five twenty-six Stanford Drive, that's next door, you can see our house to the left in the picture. That's probably stretching it to get twenty feet between houses. Okay, now first of all, I think the information that we got said that they would be possibly renting out to six guests.
We need to bring the mic towards you so we can hear you.
With pleasure, we can't hear out here. How about that?
Uh, that's better.
Okay, we understood from the information sent to us that this would be six occupants, and I think that says eight.
They're requesting eight.
Well, why, who is, who, who was our letter from, do we know? It said six.
City staff mails out.
Beg pardon?
City staff mails out letters, so the, the flyer you received was from city staff.
Okay, well, this is, this is, you know, we've gotten different information here to begin with.
Will you dress, will you dress us, please? Address the board, talk to the board.
I'm sorry.
No problem. So you're saying you got a letter that told you it was six?
Yes.
Okay. That's our, that's the staff's recommendation is six. The petitioner requested eight, but the recommendation is that it's, it be six.
Oh, okay, I didn't understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, that helps, I would, I would recommend that too. The driveway is small and space for two cars possibly in the garage, there would not be enough. There would not be enough par- parking. Now, what I am most curious about is noise. Uh, I have a copy of the city, uh, noise, uh, recommendations. And, um, as I said, the other house is maybe twenty feet away from mine. My bedroom is on the north side of the house, which is that solid wall, uh, alongside that house. Had some issue with it back last football season. Now, they, this was not, this, the noise was not coming from this house, but was coming from like, three and a half blocks down in Red Point. Do you know where Red Point Apartments are? Okay, um, spoke with the police department, they came out and checked on it three times that night. And every time the police car would go into the, into the parking lot of Red Point, the noise would stop, strangely enough. Anyway, apparently, it's, it's hard, I understand that it would be hard to control that. What I'm curious to know is if we could ask for a copy of the noise regulations in Tuscaloosa be attached to whatever contract a person might sign for that three-day stay there, letting them know that they are, uh, they have the information right there at hand. And I would like the, uh, the, uh, noise regulation thing signed as well by that person, acknowledging that they have it. I think that may be specifically what I have to say, unless anybody has a question for me. This is a nice, quiet, little cul-de-sac street when we moved in there ten, eleven years ago. Older people. And now, two of the houses have been bought by the same person and allocated to rentals. I feel like this changes the value of my house, and I intend to call and ask them if they would please put them on the market, if they don't want to live them, in them anymore. So, do you know whether or not it changes the value of my house for it to suddenly be mixed as a owner-rental neighborhood?
That's hard to say, because it determines, you know, where you live in the city. Because depending on where you are, proximity to the stadium, proximity to the university, to the hospital, you know, it can become desirable to have your property for traveling nurses, for different people. So, it just depends on where you are in the city. But if you're close enough to hear noise in Red Point, then you're in probably a desirable area. So, um, I don't know if the value, all property value in Tuscaloosa is going up right now. We can't get enough inventory, so, you know, I don't know, I hope that makes you feel better that they, you know.
Not really.
Not a lot of inventory right now.
Okay, I, does anybody have any questions for me?
We will have Ms., we'll have Ms. Lockhart come back and address what you just brought up about the noise.
Good.
Thank you so much. Ms. Lockhart, if you would come and address the noise and how you plan to deal with noise in that area?
Where did you say you live, you don't own any apartments?
I have-
Ma'am?
You live in the apartments?
No, ma'am, I live over Forest Lake.
Okay, so, in re- uh, response to noise, how is noise handled in the contract? And how the tenants that move into, I mean, the short-term rental people informed about noise ordinance?
We've never had an issue with that before, so I don't attach anything other than the short-term, in the short-term rental agreement regarding noise, but I haven't had any complaints.
What does it say in the agreement, so she can know? What does it say in your agreement? Some of the people that come in that manage, they have noise detectors that tell them when the noise goes up to a certain level. They have, uh, a meter and monitors the noise. So, in your agreement, what does it say about noise?
It doesn't say anything about noise. I've never had an issue with it, so we've never addressed any of that. And since I am a real estate broker, I mean, I can't address the fact that her concern about whether a short-term rental would decrease her property values. We haven't seen that either. We have such low inventory anyway, you know, that's never come up as a factor either.
So, in the event that there is a noise issue at this particular residence, how would you all deal with that? How would they?
Well, if I got notification of it, of course, I would address the short-term tenant at that time. And if there, it continued to be a problem, either, you know, I would not rent to them again, or I would be willing to attach something to the lease agreement, acknowledging that, about the noise factor.
Okay.
I've got a question for city staff. Is there anything where we can require, uh, the petitioners to have something in their contract for, like, having a noise monitoring, is there anything like that, or did I get into some legal?
So, I would say, you know, they have to abide by the nose, noise ordinance regardless. And so, I mean, you, you could request that, but I think that that's going to be kind of a moot point, because we will, you know, if there is an issue, just like she was saying, and, and the cops get called, you know, they're going to have, we're going to have that record, and then that's going to be something that y'all are going to take into account with any additional approvals for this property.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. So, to address your concerns about noise, they don't have anything specifically in their particular contract, but in the event that the police are called out, because, like, you called the police or report it to three-one-one, that there was a complaint, you know, make a complaint to three-one-one, we take that very seriously when it comes back for renewal. Any type of action like that, we do take that into consideration about renewing. She says she's never had any issues, so that means they probably take care in terms of screening who they allow to rent the properties. I'm finding with short-term rentals, no one wants an issue. They want it to be easy breezy, and just people come and they make the money and not have to deal with issues. So, it's not going to be a party house, um, anything like that, where you think it's going to be game day party, something like that. It's just going to probably be parents coming in for Parents Weekend, and some game people, but nothing major, so. But if you do have an issue, please call and report it. Call the police, call three-one-one, and make the complaint, okay? All right, anybody?
You don't think I could get a copy of the noise ordinance attached? I, that was one of my questions.
No, we can't require them to do that. So, they have, so the only rem- remedy that you have is to report it. So, we can't make it a requirement to attach it. But they do have to abide by it. Are they, is there anybody else in the public that'd like to make a comment for or against? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment, and we will go with board comment.
Uh, it looks like there's several other short-term rentals in the area. As far as we know, there haven't been any issues with those short-term rentals. Um, so, I am in favor of city's recommendation of six adults, three vehicles for the first year. I'm sorry. Sure, I don't have any issues, um, with the short-term rental, especially since there are others in the area. Um, and so, I am good with staff's recommendation of six adults, three vehicles for the first year.
Yeah, I'm in agreeance as well, I don't see an issue with this, there's others in the area. Uh, I'm in agreeance with the six-three staff recommendation.
I agree as well, this is, um, basic, um, short-term rental. Uh, Ms. Lockhart has had experience and hadn't had any issues. I'm in agreement with staff's recommendation, six-three.
Yeah, I have no issues, I'm in favor of staff recommendations.
Same, I have no issue, I mean, recommend staff recommendation.
Okay, so we'll close, uh, board comment. I'll read the petition. ZBA dash fifteen dash twenty-five, Vanessa Lockhart petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at twenty-five sixteen Stanford Drive, Zone SFR dash two, Council District six. Six adults, three, approving with six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights, one-year probation, probation. One car must be parked in the garage. Sorry with Mayor Catherine, voting?
Yes.
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 Petition approved.
All right, we'll move back to the first case, ZBA eight twenty-five. Rod Shirley petitions for a variance from the accessory structure regulations on the property at fifty-two seventeen Overbrook Road. This is Zone R, SFR one, Council District six. So, here we have the zoning of the property, as well as that aerial view, and then an image of the house, and another image of the house. So, the petitioner is requesting a variance from the accessory structure regulations to allow a ten-by-tent tent to remain in the driveway. Per the petitioner, in absence of the tent, the driveway is unusable from June to September. The petitioner states that the tent is in no way hinders, obstructs, or creates any potential risk, and that they are considering alternatives to the tent, but that nothing would be completed until midsummer or later. So, here is the request, essentially to keep the ten-by-ten tent that you see in the image before you, located in the driveway. And then here we have our applicable regulations for accessory structures. So, in residential zoning district, no accessory structure can be located closer to a street than the principal or the primary structure. Uh, we did receive multiple comments, uh, in opposition to this request. We did receive one comment in support of this request. We do have the petitioner here in person. Do you have any questions for staff?
No question. All right, Mrs. Shirley?
Yes. Can I apologize? I was here twenty minutes early and forgot this. So, I was a twenty-minute drive back, twenty years, still got here like within fifteen minutes late. So, I do apologize. First experience in this situation, I've been sitting here listening, and mine's a little different.
Will you give us your name and your address, just for the record?
I apologize, Rod Shirley, five-two-one-seven Overbrook Road.
Okay. All right, explain to us what's going on.
All right, um, it started when I got a warning. And it was from the enforcement guys. And I got to be fair, this is not the tent they saw, okay? So, I, I, I'm thinking it probably makes a difference. The other one was a little bigger, looked a little bit more elaborate. And two weeks after they came out and I got the warning, we had a storm. And that canvas top is a flimsy, is pretty cheap. Collected water from a big storm, and it literally was holding over fifty gallons of water, sunk down, you know how between the frame pieces? The whole thing completely crumpled and just went down. So, I ended up having to throw it away. Well, that's the one that they were giving me a warning on. So, this one's different, but, you know, obviously, when I requested, because obviously I got a warning, and this is the type of arrangement that I am wanting to discuss, so, probably proper, you know, the one I had and requested a variance. Now, what I've got here is, I said that I was unable to reasonably use my driveway without the sun shade in the hottest part of the summer. I've actually measured or gauged the temperature inside the car, which I had to keep the windows rolled up, because if you don't, that's the day it rains. That's the day you have an incredible thunderstorm. It gets between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty degrees that I registered in that car. So, because of that, I've lived there four years. And I put up with this kind of thing for four years. And it was a different driveway before, and I spent a lot of effort and a lot of money to rearrange it to be able to use it, so that I could conveniently go from this car into my side door of the house. If I don't have that space to use, it's a hike. It's a hike around the entire house, down ten railroad-type steps, across another driveway, and into a carport that is at the corner of my property. And I u- you know, I'm active, and I'm in and out several times a day. And when you have stuff you're carrying in, and you're having to make two and three trips, over four years that I've been there, that got old, that got really old. So, I think, hey, you know, what's a solution? What's a solution if you got a situation where you're not going to use the driveway, it's simply too hot? You're, you're, you're going to leave that there just like that, without the sun shade, in the summertime, in the hottest part of the summertime? You're, you're gonna do that. Now, the solution would be just to pull it into the garage, right? Pull it to the garage. I don't have a garage, because I bought the house four years ago, which was COVID. There was one home in this entire area for sale. So, I had to get it, guess what? It didn't have a garage. You know, which, I've been looking into this a little bit, makes my situation, and I'm trying to use wording here, uncommon or unsimilar to the average homeowner. Because the solution is to pull it to the garage, darn it, you know, if it's so hot, right? Don't have that. And the other option is to hike all the way down to that far corner of my property. Every single time I have to, uh, go in and out of the property, you see what I'm talking about there. So, um, the solution was a little sun shade. And believe it or not, it works. And I can actually roll the windows down now. So, when it does get hot, you know, it keeps it a lot cooler, and I can actually use the driveway. When I say I can't use the driveway, I need to explain this. I can use the driveway, I can also stick my finger in really hot water, but I'm not gonna do that. It's simply too hot. It's simply a problem for me, it's been a problem for four years. So, I've avoided using that spot for that exact reason. So, put the sun shade up as a test run, because I basically need it when the temperatures are greater than ninety degrees. So, we're not talking about something that's necessarily needing to be there twelve months a year, but certainly during parts of the year, it becomes, for me, essential. I spent a lot of time and effort creating that garage situation right there. And the hardship clearly is that if I don't get to use that little sun shade, you can see where I have to go on the side of the house, around that corner, up in that way. It's a huge trek to go all the way down and all the way back every time, when you should be able to use and not be denied access to that little drive area at certain parts of the year, you know, for three or four months of the year. And, pardon. Here it is. It fits in this little bag, and you tote it around. And that sun shade is a single unit. It simply collapses exactly like an umbrella. You unclip floor little legs, it lowers, you push one thing, and it completely collapses and fits in this bag. Fifty bucks, Academy Sports, I'd recommend it, seems to work pretty well. Okay, so, I filed the variance because I had this warning in front of me, and I knew that this was a very important issue for me. And I had help from Mr. Bowen, and he was able to provide me a copy of the section twenty-five one oh six, because it's not available to the public. If you try to find it, it's not there, it's not updated.
Pull it up.
It's not updated for the public, you can't, the public can't get it.
The new code?
Am I right?
No, the new code is available on our website.
Excuse me?
I will pull it up from our website, but the new zoning ordinance is publicly available.
Let's pull it up from the website, because it is public record and you can-
The new, updated one?
The new, updated one.
Well, we tried to, I tried to get it, and I couldn't. But Mr. Bowen is very helpful, he's been working with-
Are you watching where he's going to see the twenty-five zoning information, twenty-twenty-five?
Yeah, see, when you go to the, that far, you know, to click the far, where it says, what does it say, zoning? M- m- mind goes blank, you get nothing. When you click that last little row out there, nothing, okay? So, anyway, my point is, and I apologize, I didn't mean to-
But I'd like for you to pull it up for us, Mr. Bowen, put it in front of us, so we can pull up, go back to the screen for us. And pull it up. You go ahead and read what, make your point that you were going to make about it, as he's pulling it up.
Oh, okay, well, so far, I've talked about hardship and my reasoning, you know, behind needing this. And it's a little trite, considering some of the things I've seen today, but it's certainly not trite, because this is one of those factors that could eventually cause me to have to consider another home that has a garage, okay? So that I can get out. And again, the biggest problem I have is when you're talking- And again, the biggest problem I have is when you're talking 100 degrees day after day after day, not a break in sight, and this particular area gets all the sun from the time the sun comes up till the sun goes down, and you're just not gonna use it. You are going to avoid that, you're gonna leave it there. But the sun shade fixes that. It fixes it, it solves the problem. Nothing's perfect, but this makes an enormous difference. Now, I'm gonna change tracks, and I'm almost done, but.
You have a minute thirty.
Oh crap, okay, after, after, okay, let me just read it then. After going over 25106, and I believe that, you know, I, I believe, after reviewing the code section here, that this particular item falls outside the definition of structure as used in the code. It clearly does, in my opinion. And so it'd be, it's not able to be actually regulated by the ordinance, period. And if you look here, you'll see the definition of structure after the word "anything", it says "in general use", "anything", so, so far, so good, I'm, I'm, they got me. Because it's saying "structure" means "anything", all right? But there's more, there's more, okay? And when you read every other single item on there, it says over and over, "this is excluded, 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 excluded." It's not permanent. It wasn't erected. It's an umbrella. It goes boop, and it pops up. And nobody says they erect an umbrella. They say they open an umbrella, okay? And also, it is not constructed on the site, unless you're about the construction in China, wherever it was made, which I don't think that "in general use" has anything associated with it. In general use means it was constructed on the site.
Thank you so much. That's your time. I thank you.
Okay, let's close.
No problem. Are there any questions from the board?
I, I do have a question.
To the city?
Sure. To the petitioner. Just to the petitioner. Can y'all pull up the site, find out what's off to the left here, behind the black fence?
I apologize, I cannot hear a single word you're saying.
Is this your carport here?
Yes.
Can you utilize this carport or not?
At great, great inconvenience, yes.
At inconvenience?
Yes.
That's, that's not a hardship, that's an inconvenience.
All right. I mean, to me, it's a hardship, but again, I'm, I understand.
Not, not to code.
I'm not the board, hm?
Not by our code, it's not. An inconvenience isn't a hardship.
Okay, and, you know, the 100-degree weather hits all of us in Alabama.
And, and then you can put your car in your garage, which I don't have.
But only one, only one of.
Am I right? You're not gonna leave it out in the sun.
But only one of my cars fits in the garage, and one has to sit outside, and so it's.
Absolutely, and a lot of people have to deal with that.
And when I'm at work, my car is outside, so, but I thank you. Any more comments to the petitioner, any other comments to the petitioner? Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody, no one signed up to speak for or against? Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition?
Joan Barth, 5541 Woodbury Lane. Here tonight to represent the Woodland Forest Association of Homeowners. We're not talking about enforcing our covenants, I know that's what you're gonna do. We're just, we oppose this variance request. Mr. Shirley has done a great job with his property. He's a good property owner. He takes good care of it. You can see by everything that's, that's there. So that's not our concern. Our concern is, one, that this is not a structure that's really gonna be weatherproof, and so it could be flying all over the neighborhood. But secondly, as you started to say, Ms. Coley, is that if you were to go through our neighborhood and look at the number of cars parked in the driveway, that's where they're, I don't know why we don't use our garages, but we don't. And it's a good portion of people have exactly the same issue. Moreover, as you've noticed, there is a place where you could park the car in the shade. You can unload your groceries or whatever, take them into the house, and simply move the car to the shade if that's a problem. I meant, think, uh, I think that's really all we have to say. Oh, we're, we're also concerned, given that they'll proliferate in the neighborhood because we all have hot cars on the driveway. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, is there a response to that, Mr. Shirley? That everybody had.
It's gonna blow all over the neighborhood? I think that's speculative. Has it blown all over the neighborhood? You know, so I don't think that's an issue. And other than the fact, I, I believe the homeowner, and I don't have a problem with homeowners association, other than they're saying, hey, it's against code. There you go. It seems to be that was their argument. My response to that is, it can only be against code if it falls under 25106, 25106. And it doesn't, I'm sorry, it doesn't. Because it cannot, it cannot pass the definition of structure. It cannot. So if it cannot, this is my opinion, I apologize, I'm not trying to sound like I know everything. But if it can't pass that definition, it can never get to 25106. It cannot get there, okay? So then what do you do? Because if the city is unable to regulate it, it's simply not the type or kind of structure, which anything's a structure. Anything's a structure. Anything is pretty much, okay? But that's not what the ordinance is talking about. The ordinance is talking about a specific type of structure. And it defines it, and goes through several lines, and goes this and that. It says it's permanent, permanence, permanence. Well, this is absolutely temporary, portable and temporary, and wasn't constructed on the property, wasn't erected on the property. And I just believe that not being able to get through that definition means it's not something that the city is gonna be able to regulate. That's my opinion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shirley. All right, so we're gonna close public comment and go to board comment. Somebody else wanted to speak for or against? Okay.
Hi, my name is Jared Colburn. I live 4709 Spesswood Street, which is the front of Woodland Forest, but I'm on this street constantly, walking with my mom. It's a great area to walk in, great, and, and Rod's yard is beautiful. I wish all, I wish these photos really took that into consideration, because since he's bought that house, it's really looked a lot better. And, I mean, this tent, I trust him. I think, you know, if he has this tent now, that actually the other tent that he was talking about is this kind of confusing situation. That one was a much prettier tent. I, I believe whatever he, he does in the future, if it's any indication of what he's done in the past, will be very well. And you even heard the HOA person say, you know, he's a good homeowner. And so, I don't know all the hardship terminology, but I did wanna make a comment that this street is kind of a weird street. Like, it's basically a side street in a way, meaning that this section of the street has four houses on it, but I don't think any of them actually, uh, their mailbox isn't on it, if that makes sense. So it's not that kind of street. Anyway, I'm in support of him. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against this petition? Okay, we'll close port, uh, public comment and go to board comment.
By the pictures, there seems to be plenty of covered parking on the property that was purchased by the homeowner. I'm assuming he viewed the house before purchasing it. So, uh, for that reason, I am not in favor of granting the variance.
Yeah, I, I'm not in a favor either. I, I'm struggling finding any type of hardship here. There's ample parking that is covered. There's other options that could, you know, the petitioner could use, you know, the window shield that goes under your window, under your main, uh, front window, if you wanted to. I mean, I just, like I said, I don't, I'm having a hard time with this one because I just cannot see in a hardship. It's more of an inconvenience, so I'm, I'm not in favor.
I agree with my fellow board members, the petitioner said himself, it's an inconvenience to have to go around and, you know, we can't just do things because that's not what a variance is for. There is covered parking, so, you know, you can remote start your car and have air blowing. You can put a thing in the window, so, I mean, there's so many other things that can be done. You know, it's Alabama. It's been hot since I've been living here all my life, so I just, it's like, you know. Yeah, I don't see the hardship on this one.
Yeah, I agree with my other board members. I, I don't see a hardship. I'm not in favor.
Okay. So at this time, we'll close board comment and read the petition. ZBA-08-25 Rod Shirley petitions for a variance from the accessory structure regulations on the property located at 5217 Overbrook Road, Zone SFR-1, Council District 6. Voting, Mayor Catherine?
No.
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 Motion bail.
All right.
Other business?
Yes, we do have one order of other business, so this is just for the rules for the transaction of business. We sent out the amendments. Most of them are just to reflect the updated ordinance and reference the updated and appropriate code sections.
Okay, and this, this is the last thing you emailed?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Everybody read and saw and feel comfortable voting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, voting?
Yes.
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 Approved. We are adjourned.